Let me know when we're done. Okay, seven o'clock. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the Citrus Heights City Council Meeting of August 27th to order, and we'll start with the flag salute. So if you join me, please stand.
Peaches to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have to work on that timing a little better, folks, but that was my fault. All right. Amy, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you. Video statement, Amy.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, August 31st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Anybody have any issues or what's the pleasure?
I'm will approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you. All right, council comments on regional boards, et cetera. So Brett, start with you. Okay, Portia?
Nothing on my end.
Jeannie?
I just briefly had a regional sand meeting this week. We got a report on economic development efforts and support of efforts throughout the region. And then we had our quarterly report and hit all our targets on customer service. All right.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, I had a regional transit meeting this Monday, and we approved an emergency resolution to fix a water leak underneath the bus maintenance building. And I had to leave the meeting early, but they also voted, I don't know if everyone recalls, the street car project where the city of Sacramento and the city of West Sacramento were going to go in on the street car to cross the river over into West Sacramento, and both cities were going to pay for it. The recent developments is the city of Sacramento has backed out. There's an effort to try and keep this alive with West Sacramento paying for it, but the board voted it down. Just with the, because one of the main reasons, I think, was West Sacramento is not part of regional transit. And so there's continuing discussions, but that project may very well be dead. And that's all I have to report.
Great. From my end, CACOG did meet. One of the big issues was the funding round. As Jeannie knows, and I think I've informed most of you, that the Public Works Group, you know, tried to, well, they did put together a proposal to streamline the process in an attempt to guarantee each city and county a certain pool of money every year as opposed to going into the competitive bid process each year for all our projects where we're spending money to put together a proposal and there's no guarantee we're going to get the funding for it. So CACOG did actually pull some things out of that program and incorporate them into things going forward. Personally, I never expected to see a move the first time it was brought up from a, you know, competitive bid to a formulaic process. Glad to see that we got some of the wins out of it, but it's, you know, in my opinion, it's ongoing discussions each year as we look at the process for funding and eventually reach, you know, a happy medium where everybody is slightly happy, slightly not. It was a 24 to 4 vote for the CACOG proposal. However, for anybody who's been down to CACOG, there's a two-tier vote threshold. It is not just the vote, but it's also there has to be a county majority. The county vote was 4-4, so the measure did not pass. It's coming back in September. Sac County is attempting to put together an alternative proposal, but, you know, we'll see what happens there. One of the four county votes against was somebody from YOLO, and I think, I think they're going to change their mind and let it go forward. Bottom line, we can't have the process be extended to where we don't have certainty for the funding round. But again, you know, I do think it's worthwhile to continue those discussions each year. So more to come on that. And that was it from my end. Next item, I believe, is public comment. Amy, I think you said we got one written comment. I don't know, I don't have access to see if anybody's hands up, but for members of the public, if you're calling in or zooming in, there is a raise your hand feature, the three little dots on the upper right hand of your screen. If you hit that, it will bring down a menu and one of those is raise your hand. So if you have something to say that's not on the agenda, feel free to use that. Amy, I'll let you take a peek at the raise your hand function. If not, I'll let you read the one written comment that we've got.
I do not see any raised hands at this time.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and I'll read the one written comment that we have received. So we have received a public comment from Tim Schaefer. He states, "Thank you for this opportunity to publicly address this council and call for a resolution in support of the Citrus Heights and Sacramento Police Departments. Peaceful protests are a constitutional right. When these protesters become violent, their message is lost to criminal acts. They are no better than those that inspired the protest in the first place. If anyone from Citrus Heights is contemplating joining in, I implore you to think about your message and those people that might be your victims, the small businesses that are already suffering and the potential suffering that you may bring on yourselves. You're being heard. Change is happening. Don't destroy your good message with violence. I pray for the safety of our police officers that put their lives on the line for us every time they put on their uniform, and I pray for the safety of the peaceful protesters and their right to be heard. Violent behavior has no place in our community. Thank you, Tim Schaefer."
And one of the things I will do going forward, which as a council, we've always done around election times, we will identify if a speaker is running for city council. You know, we have four candidates. Most of them, we've never heard from, and suddenly, you know, they enter into the council race and all have a comment every council meeting. So we will, you know, just comment that if an individual submits a comment or talks, whether they are a candidate for city council and Tim Schaefer is. So with that, I believe we're on to the consent calendar.
So consent calendar items four and five for council consideration.
Of approval.
Second.
Okay, I heard Daniels with the motion, and I heard Bruins more clearly than I believe it was Steve with the second. So that's how it'll go. It might have been Portia. I don't know.
It was Portia.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I didn't log into Zoom on my laptop, so I'm, I have to wait till I can see a face on my screen, and it doesn't always go to each one of you. So we have a motion and a second roll call. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. All right, 5-0, motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Amy.
Next item is public hearing, item number six. The subject is general plan amendment and zoning code updates. The recommendation is to move to determine the proposed general plan amendment and zoning code amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15305 of the guidelines, to adopt a resolution adopting a general plan amendment to allow 0 to 40 dwelling units per acre in the business professional land use designation, and to introduce and read by title only an ordinance to amend certain sections of the zoning code in regard to commercial development, parking reductions, creekside development permit requirements within the business professional zone, transportation uses as a home occupation, and other minor changes.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Allison, is this you tonight, or Casey, or Colleen?
It's me. Hi, this is Allison, Bermudas, with the Community Development and Planning Division here tonight with the proposal Amy mentioned. Bring up my presentation here. As mentioned, we have two actions tonight. One to approve a resolution approving a general plan amendment, and a second action approving an ordinance to update certain sections of the zoning code. First, I'll talk about the general plan amendment briefly. And as you know, the general plan provides a lot of information about development of the future of the city, and one of its elements is land use. So it provides some broad land use categories that apply citywide. And then the zoning code takes those broad land uses and gets more parcel specific. So the two documents, they work together. So since they do work hand in hand, they do need to be consistent. And we do have one inconsistency in the general plan. So tonight's action will bring that, the general plan and the zoning code to consistency. And it has to do with the general plan, the general commercial land use category. So if you look at the general plan land use designations, there's shown here on the left, there's a variety of residential designations, and then the general commercial. And then the chart shows which zoning districts those designations apply to. So if you look at the general commercial land use designation, which covers general commercial zoning, LC zoning, SC zoning, and then you go to the density column, it'll shows that the general plan provides a density allowance of 0 to 20 units per acre when you're developing general commercial land use designation property. And then when you go to the zoning code table that gets into the specifics, where it breaks down those individual zoning designations, when you look at BP and LC, they have the 20 units per acre maximum density. And then when you go to the SC and GC, they actually go up to 40 units per acre. And the zoning code was changed several years ago to allow that 40 units. So this is just bringing the general plan into its conformance. So the revision would amend this chart to reflect the 40. So the 20 would be changed to 40, so they would be consistent. So the amendment is needed to be consistent. It's actually required by law that the two documents are consistent. It continues to provide the flexibility for a variety of housing in those zones. It does help us meet our regional housing needs allocation requirements. And just to confirm, there are no changes to the zoning code with this action. It's just amending the general plan land use. So any questions on the general plan portion before I move into the zoning code? Nope. All right. So a couple zoning code changes for tonight to consider. Also, about six or so kind of minor edits, but three that I just want to talk about briefly. The first one being in the commercial land use table, the zoning code has a land use table that has all the land uses and then broken down by zone, and then what's allowed by right, what's required for a use permit, or what would be prohibited. And when you look at that table in the BP column, in that zoning district, which is really for offices and very low traffic generating type uses, they do allow some commercial uses in that zone if they're a very small portion. So this would be a situation, let's say you have an office building, and in that office building, maybe there's a cafe or something that supports that office, then you can have that use that generally would not be allowed in that zone, as long as it's a minimal amount and the zoning code limits it to 15% of the, of the floor space of that use to be for this heavier use. So you might have a cafe, as I mentioned, you might have a small little retail store that maybe sells office supplies to support the office, little dance studios, things like that could be in a BP zone if they're in this certain percentage. If they were exceeding that percentage, the zoning code does, does allow them to request to be there, but they'd have to come before and obtain a use permit. We are recommending to change that use permit requirement and to drop that down to a minor use permit. That would be a staff level review. We go through the same in-depth review, but it would not require the hearing, thus making that process more timely and efficient for the applicant. So that's the only change on that section is just changing the entitlement process if that user wants to occupy more than 15%, where it would go down to a minor use permit. The other change in the creekside development section of the zoning code, we have a setback requirement for structures along creekways. And currently, there's the measurement of that setback is provided in the code, and it's an either/or measurement. Either you meet this requirement or this requirement, or the greater of the two. And the way that it currently reads, and the text was in your staff report, is that or, that either/or didn't really make sense because one was always going to be greater than the other. So the alternative was just kind of confusing. It was hard for applicants to understand. So just proposing to strike out that verbiage. So you just have the one measurement that we've always applied. And then the third thing talked about is home occupations. And these are home-based businesses that run some, their business activity from their home. And a couple edits to that. One, just clarifying that tattooing and body art are not allowed as a home occupation. This is not really a change, it's just bringing it, revising where it is in that code so it's more evident to the reader that it is a prohibited use. And then currently, home occupation regulations state that transportation activities are prohibited from a home. And in this ever-changing world and the variety of new transportation services that are around, we felt this should be stricken because there's many things that now are in play, like people have Lyft, they have Uber, and these are basically home operations, and someone just uses their own personal car. So technically, our code would not allow that prohibited because that was a transportation service. But it really has no impact and wasn't bringing any unusual activity into a neighborhood. So we wanted to remove that from the, from a prohibited use and move the verbiage over to the operating standard that would really just define what types of vehicles could not be used for your home-based business. And that was really the meat of why that was prohibited before. And so we just struck it from being prohibited to operating standards that listed under trafficking vehicles. And added the statement that in the criteria of vehicles that it says, examples of prohibited vehicles include limousines, tow trucks, et cetera. So the larger vehicles that could be impactive, you know, still would be prohibited to be stored at the home, but then allow other transportation services such as Lyft, Uber. Many people do dispatching from their home now. It's all computer-based, but the actual vehicles aren't there. They just are answering the phone and dispatching from their computer. So this revision will allow that to occur. So that's really the highlights of the zoning code amendments. As required, these were presented to the Planning Commission in July. We reviewed them and approved them as presented, and they are forwarding to you a recommendation approving both the resolution and the ordinance amendment. And that's it. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any council questions for Allison? Okay, this is a public hearing. So again, anybody wishing to speak on this matter would use the raise their hand function. I'll give you a moment and then ask the city clerk, Amy, if she sees any raised hands for our public hearing comments.
I do not see any raised hands.
With that, I will close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
I will move to determine the proposed general plan amendment and zoning code amendment are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15.305 of the guidelines. And...
Okay, so we have a motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Bruins' motion, Middleton's second. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Step away. We'll come back.
Councilmember Daniels.
You're on mute, Brett. Hi, Brett.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Motion one carries, 5-0.
And then I move that we approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, adopting a general plan amendment to allow 0 to 40 dwelling units per acre in the business professional land use designation.
Motion Bruins. Second.
Second.
Second. Daniels? Roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0.
And then finally, I move to introduce, read by title only, and waive the full reading of these ordinance to amend certain sections of the zoning code in regard to commercial development, parking reductions, creekside development, permit requirements within the business professional zone, transportation uses as a home occupation, and other minor changes.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. Roll call. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. All right, last motion carries, 5-0. Believe that's it for our public hearings. Onto the regular calendar. Next item, Amy.
Next item, regular calendar, item number seven. The subject is amendment to the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 74, to include updates related to AB 341, commercial recycling, AB 1826, mandatory commercial organics recycling, and SB 1383, short-lived climate pollutants. And the recommendation is to introduce and read by title only an ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code related to business and multifamily recycling.
Okay, let's talk trash. Mary Poole.
Thank you. Mayor Slowey, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Is that screen on full screen?
Yep, we're good.
Great. Well, as I was saying, good evening, Mayor Slowey, members of the city council. This is Mary Poole with General Services. I do have a short presentation, a little longer than brief, to walk through regarding this item, which is one of the steps of the city's formal recycling and organic recycling plan. The plan has multiple components, which I will touch on briefly at the end of the presentation. Our three consulting group is assisting the city with putting our plan together, and Carrie Baxter is with us tonight to help with any questions. So the city is methodically and strategically moving forward to ensure we are compliant with state laws and to increase compliance within all sectors of the community for unfunded state recycling mandates. The proposed update to the municipal code tonight related to business and multifamily recycling is one of the major steps. And as Amy read, the staff recommendation is to introduce, read by title only, and waive the reading of the ordinance. So tonight, I'm just going to walk briefly through some history that has led us to this point. We did go through an extensive study session on the topic back in January, but there has been a lot that's been going on since then. So I wanted to take a few minutes to review some background for this item. There are a number of unfunded mandates related to mandatory recycling and organic recycling that have led us to this point, starting back in 1989 with the Integrated Waste Management Act, which mandated the 50% diversion rate, to the more recent SB 1383, which mandates organics recycling by every generator, including residential, by 2022. Specifically, AB 939 required 50% diversion levels by 2000. AB 32, adopted in 2006, really seeks to address climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions with a goal to reduce to 1990 levels by this year, 2020. In 2012, AB 341 introduced mandatory commercial recycling. This requires all businesses generating four or more cubic yards of solid waste per week to recycle. We have had eight years of implementation efforts on this law thus far. The city, and in fact, the region, continue to struggle with full compliance for mandatory commercial recycling. And CalRecycle is exerting more pressure for jurisdictions to increase our compliance rates. This is one of the factors that's driving the ordinance update before you tonight. AB 1826 began implementation in 2016 and included a tiered approach to implementing mandatory organics recycling for businesses. This unfunded mandate started off by requiring that large organics generators, like grocery stores and large restaurants, to recycle their organics waste. And as of just this week, CalRecycle has reduced the threshold for cover generators, who will be subject to this requirement, to include any business generating two cubic yards or more of solid waste per week. There have been four years of implementation efforts on this measure so far. And the next level of compliance is required to be in effect by January 2021. So the two cubic yards per week, those generators need to be in compliance by 2021. This is another one of the factors driving the ordinance update before you tonight. This is another one of the factors driving the ordinance update before you tonight. The next most recent and far-reaching unfunded mandate we will touch on tonight is SB 1383. This is stemming still from AB 32, but building upon AB 1826, the organics recycling for business. SB 1383 sets statewide mandates for the organics recovery, and it requires all generators to pre-provide organic waste recycling services, again, including residential. We're not talking about residential tonight, but just to keep that in front of you. It also includes requirements for edible food recovery. The next slide is some more information about 1383, and its intent is to reduce California's landfill disposal of organics waste by 75% from 2014 levels by 2025. This includes food waste, green waste, and certain paper products. By 2022, local government must provide organics waste collection for all residents and businesses, and businesses is emphasized because it's the focus of our ordinance update proposed tonight. It also includes extensive outreach and education to cover generators, and again, the food, edible food recovery program, inspection and enforcement provided by the jurisdictions, and ultimately conducting facility capacity planning for processing. The next slide is provided by CalRecycle, and it's intended to help show that methane gas is a super pollutant and that it has a major impact on climate change, negatively impacting California. And it points out that we are seeing those negative effects throughout the state, particularly in terms of drought condition and horrific wildfires. This is another slide provided by CalRecycle to help make the connection between the massive amount of food and organic waste that is generated each year and the millions of Californians that are food insecure. This leads to the requirement in SB 1383 to establish the edible food recovery program, which is another step in our overall city recycling plan. This program is not on the agenda tonight, but it will come before you in the relatively near future. For AB 341, the mandatory commercial recycling law, the city has been working with haulers and businesses for eight years to implement. The compliance rate has been hovering about 65 to 75% for the past few years, and it was 68% in June of 2020. For AB 1826, the mandatory commercial organics recycling law, the city has been working with haulers and businesses for the past four years. The compliance rate is a dismal 25%, and this is after we factor in businesses that have an exemption on record with the city. These exemptions are typically granted for businesses that generate less than a half of a cubic yard of organic material per week. CalRecycle has advised the city that we must take actions to increase this compliance rate significantly or face being out of compliance ourselves. Which leads us to tonight's proposed ordinance update. There are a couple of characteristics about the current system which contribute to the low compliance rate. One is the non-exclusive franchise system, which allows the franchised haulers to compete for business from the commercial customers. We are not proposing any changes to that system at this time. However, the other issue is that the current ordinance requires haulers to offer recycling and organic service, but it does not require business to subscribe to the services offered by the hauler. The ordinance update is intended to address this issue and to do so in a way that is consistent with how codes are similarly being updated in other jurisdictions throughout the region. So after conferring with the haulers, local businesses, other agencies, and CalRecycle, the proposal is to amend the code to remove the offer option and to replace it with the following language. "The franchisee shall not provide garbage collection service to the commercial customer unless they are subscribed to the designated recycle materials and organics materials with the same franchisee. And if they choose to use a different option, then they must have an alternative compliance form on file and approved by the city." The ordinance provides additional clarifications, including how to submit the alternative compliance form if the business wants to do something different to provide their organics or recycling service. It's also clarifying that the business must provide containers and signage as per the state law, and again, as per state law, they must notify employees and tenants of the The next steps on the commercial recycling ordinance are to, if approved tonight and subsequently, would be to amend the commercial solid waste franchise agreements to reflect these new requirements, to continue and to expand outreach to businesses and multifamily complexes offering education, support, and assistance, to implement an inspection and enforcement mechanism, and also to seek grant assistance for help with outreach, education materials, and potentially even containers for businesses and multifamily complexes. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, I did want to touch on the city's overall compliance plan, which includes the following tasks. Commercial ordinance update, which is before you tonight, which would lead to the commercial franchise agreement update, ongoing education and outreach, a commercial inspection program that we would bring before you, a contract for those services at a later date. The next steps after that would be to address the residential franchise agreement and organics collection in our residential program, develop and implement the edible food recovery program, and then address the city procurement policies, which all need to be in effect by January of 2022. So then back to the staff recommendation and available to answer any questions.
Mayor Slowey?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I have a couple questions, if I may.
Please.
Mary, in the staff report under fiscal impact, it does mention about the unfunded mandates, including our staff time and resources and materials. I assume materials would be, that's not for the customers, right? But anyway, my question is, what is the annual fiscal impact to us? And if it's too hard to estimate, one of my concerns is, like you said, they're unfunded, and I would, I'd like to see some kind of letter to CalRecycle or our legislator or something saying, how do we pay for this? Our businesses can't afford it, we can't afford it. And does all the, do we separate all this stuff? And are all the haulers taking it to separate facilities that accept food waste? Or is it all going to the same place, going to the landfill? And so we're going through all these efforts and nobody's ready to receive these type of organics and recycling materials?
Right. Well, certainly, there is a significant fiscal impact. The bulk of that impact right now is certainly going to be felt by the ratepayers, the customers themselves. The city does have some limited amount of franchise fees that are collected from the commercial haulers that will help us in our efforts, but as you noted, the requirements on staff, not just in the solid waste division, but the entirety of the city, are going to continue to expand. So that's certainly a really good point.
This is...
Yeah.
Do you know about where this stuff ends up?
Yes.
I'm aware of a few facilities that accept the food waste.
So at the current time, all of the material that is being collected, organics and recycling, are going to the proper facilities. So as the waste stream or the feedstock increases, that will be an issue. At the current time, though, our material is going to proper locations, and I could provide that location to you. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I could...
That would be nice. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
Yeah, Mary, would you back up a slide, please?
Yes.
Okay, can you talk a little bit about the edible food recovery program? What does that mean exactly, and how is that going to be implemented? Who gets it and all that?
So I could talk about it a little bit, but I think Carrie would be more able to speak to that a little bit more robustly if you want to go ahead and explain a little bit about that, Carrie. Thank you.
I sure can. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. So the edible food recovery requirement of SB 1383 actually goes into effect in 2025, and the requirement is at a statewide level to recover 20% of all edible food that is uneaten and currently just thrown away. So the program will most likely be more at a countywide level, and that's something that we're going to be looking into a little more deeply, and we'll bring that to you guys by, it looks like, by January.
So it's more from a business standpoint, right? Obviously not residential.
Yeah, so it's looking at, like, your grocery stores or restaurants, places where there is some food that's available that could be eaten, but instead of, when it does expire, they're throwing it into the garbage.
Got it.
Okay.
And this is really going to impact, besides our grocery stores, our food banks are really going to be impacted. There's quite an array of requirements for tracking the food from its source to its final destination. So it, I'm glad that you corrected me. It is 2025 because it's a lot to work with, and we want to make sure our food banks are able to operate effectively.
So are the food banks impacted because they're going to be receiving this food or because they have, they're going to be regulated?
They'll be receiving it. You go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, they also will be regulated to an extent. They're going to be asked to provide documentation and reports as well to the state.
I would think that a food bank wouldn't have to have a recovery program because their whole purpose is to get rid of all the food and give it to the needy.
I think the larger issue is when they do begin receiving more food, also knowing where they can take it to and having a plan in place to be able to distribute and store the food without it spoiling.
I've got some comments.
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, Jeannie, just so you know, it's just basically the government's way of screwing something up, you know, like a food bank, you know, and having them buried in bureaucracy. So I don't remember voting for anybody from CalRecycle. I don't even know who they are. I don't really even care who they are. But it's just kind of, just, it's just this whole presentation, and forgive me, Mary, nothing towards you because you're the rock star and whatnot, and you're just carrying the message. But as it was said, unfunded, what should be added into is unrealistic and unnecessary. You know, all I'm visioning right now is all of these businesses that are going to have to recycle these food products, and what are they going to do? Am I going to put this food somewhere inside my business and hold it there for a week until the garbage man comes next week? And how's that going to smell? No, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to put my employees through that. So I'm going to put it outside. I'll put it on my back door, and it'll be 110 degrees today in Citrus Heights, and I can only imagine how that'll smell after a while, and the vermin and the rats and skunks and wild animals and who else, you know, and possibly even homeless that might be attracted to then start digging through things on my, you know, of my food products that are sitting on the back door waiting for garbage day. The whole thing is just so incredibly ridiculous that I just wish we would do a pushback instead and not, not do the staff recommendation of, you know, following along, you know, getting in our lane and doing these things because somebody, somewhere, some group that's called CalRecycle, that nobody ever elected and doesn't have to answer to anybody because they're appointed by somebody, says we have to do this. So and I just, it's just unbelievable. There's going to be so much, I think, of a negative result of doing this type of thing. And again, not to mention the cost again, they were just going to add more cost to businesses in one way or another. You know, maybe they'll have to pay somebody to come and get their food waste every single day so that it's not sitting inside their business or sitting on their back door. It is just beyond ridiculous. So I wish we would push back, and I'm not going to support the staff recommendation just because of that. But again, I want to make sure that Mary understands that that's not directed towards her. She's a rock star and doing a great job and did a great presentation, and I understand the point of where we are.
So Mary, what's the penalty for not being in compliance?
Carrie, did you want to speak to that?
The state can penalize the city $10,000 a day for not having an enforcement mechanism in place, which would be something such as your ordinance or franchise agreement requiring, oh, cover generators to comply.
Thank you, Carrie, sorry. You know, and that's the rub. My feelings about this are pretty akin to Brett's. I think this is a huge overreach on the part of the government. When they started doing this, initially, I thought that, and I'm just, even though we're not talking about residential, if you take this to its nth degree, it sounds like garbage disposals are going to be outlawed, no longer used, because you can't dispose of your, of your food or your waste in that manner. And so, but I don't think it's going to, certainly be that the remedy on a pushback is, I don't think at this level, I think what we need to do is we need to get people in state offices that will take a look at these things, and they'll turn some of these rulings around. Because if our compliance rate is 25%, that's got to tell you, it is failing. And it's not because people don't want to do it or aren't trying to do it, it is unrealistic. I'm going to support it because I'm not going to put the city in that position of being potentially fined $10,000 a day. But I do think that we need to take a broader look at this on a higher level and get our legislators to put some sanity in some of these rulings and reverse some of them. This is ridiculous. Those are my comments.
That's what I was trying to say. I'm going to support staff on this one. I don't want to get us in trouble, but we need to push back. So I'd like, I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, and perhaps what we should do, once we're done with this vote tonight, is, on a future agenda or a future, near-future item, is to direct staff to write our letter of objection so that they know that, how we feel about this in Citrus Heights.
I would second that.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
What is it? Well, I will, I will read the staff recommendation, which is to amend Chapter 74, Article 4 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, include updates relating to AB 141, commercial recycling, AB 1826, mandatory commercial recycling, organics recycling, and SB 1183, short-lived climate pollutants. Did I say that right? Yeah, okay. And, oh.
Yeah, you moved the staff recommendation. That's...
Yeah, I read the wrong thing. So I recommend that we read by title only and waive the first reading of this ordinance, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, amending Chapter 74, Article 4 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, related to business and multifamily recycling.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bruins. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
Second by Middleton.
Porsha beat me again.
Yep. Second by Middleton. Amy, roll call.
Councilmember Bruins?
Electarily, yeah.
Councilmember Daniels?
Symbolic no.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
A qualified yes.
Mayor Slowey?
Yes. All right, motion carries four, one. Next item, Amy.
Next item is department report number eight. The subject is presentation on the Citrus Heights Collaborative, and the presentation will be by Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department.
Welcome, Nicole.
Oh, good evening, mayor, council members. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. So I'm here tonight to provide an overview and kind of some update on the Citrus Heights Collaborative. Stephanie Cotter and I have been facilitating the collaborative for a couple of years now, so thought it was time to give you guys an update. I'm going to pull up my shared screen. I'm going to pull up my shared screen.
It's right next to the plus and minus. Yep, there you go.
There we go. All right, thank you. So, I'm going to go over what the role of the collaborative is. It acts as a clearinghouse for information or expansion of programs and services, serves as a place to share information among various local organizations, serves as a bridge for communication to build relationships and partnerships. It leverages each other's strengths. So, the collaborative meets once a month, and at our meetings, it really develops relationships and partnerships, and everyone's strengths come together to really make those connections among services and programs. It also serves as a review and advisory board to the council and to advisory boards. So, the collaborative was established in 1999, so it's been around for many years. Here are a few examples of projects the Citrus Heights Collaborative has been involved in or has initiated over the years to help improve the quality of life in our community. Some of the projects listed here are Healthy Cities Grant, the collaborative has hosted a town hall meeting with the county to really find out what the priorities in the community are, Citrus Heights Youth Initiative, Sunday Fun Day, the collaborative sponsored the All About Youth Zone, and the Sayonara Partnership, and also the Green Planning Academy Walkability Over the years, the collaborative and its members have presented or facilitated workshops on a variety of topics. These are a few of the workshops over the years that the collaborative has been involved in. Culture of Poverty, Domestic Violence, Drug and Gang Violence, our Citrus Heights Police Department hosts this workshop, Russian and Slavic Cultures, Homelessness, Family Violence, and Elder Abuse, and a few, about a year ago, Kevin Bracy was invited out. He did a motivational presentation, which really was the message of collaborating and really being one and trying to work together. So, this is a table of not all of the collaborative members, but some that do attend the meetings. Our active members are from a variety of different organizations, and many of the members that attend have been intending the collaborative since 1999, so they've been longtime members. The collaborative continues to grow. Currently, we have 68 members. Before the pandemic, the collaborative would meet once a month. It was the second Friday of each month, and the collaborative has established an annual planning calendar, so each month we would have a different topic, and organization would come, they'd present on behalf of their organization and provide information on their services and resources that they offer to the community. And at those meetings, that's really where the partnerships and connections are made. So, mark your calendar, September 11th, we're going to host our first virtual Zoom collaborative meeting. Anyone can attend these meetings. It's really anyone who's interested in helping support the expansion of social services. So, tonight, I have invited a few of the longtime collaborative members to speak on behalf of the collaborative and kind of how they got involved and how they find that the collaborative is beneficial to the community. So, tonight, I have with us Mary, just with the city, Sharon is also with the city, and Leslie with SMUD, and Arti with the San Juan School District. So, like I said, I have a couple of questions for them, just to kind of go over what their organization is, the resources that they provide, and also just to tell us a little bit how they got involved in the collaborative and how the collaborative benefits the community. So, first, I'd like to invite Mary to speak.
Thank you, Nicole. Mary Poole with General Services, again. I actually joined the collaborative at its inception. I think the collaborative and I were established around the same time. I have attended regularly ever since, and no matter what capacity that I have served with the city. Like Nicole said, some of the collaborative members have changed over time, but others like me have been here since the beginning, and recognizing the value to the community, we've participated no matter what hat that we wear. We've actually even had members who were retired or changed organizations, and they've still remained connected to the collaborative. And it's because of the extensive reach that this group has into the community and also to those who serve the community. For me, in particular, in my various roles with the city, I've benefited by the fact that the collaborative acts as a grants advisory board, as well as a group that serves and represents community members that often do not participate in civic activities. Healthy Cities, Safe Routes to School, CACOG, Bike Ped, and Caltrans Sustainability Grants, such as the Comprehensive Transit Plan, are just a few of the grants where the collaborative was able to provide support to the grant applications, provide substantive input, and targeted outreach to the community. And just as a little aside, the Community Campout was started from the collaborative. That was one of the projects that came out of the collaborative in the early days. As Nicole mentioned, the collaborative also hosts training and specialized education for our members and expands those opportunities to others and even community members to attend. These sessions are usually a few hours in time, but the information that they share helps us understand our community, and I'm thinking particularly the culture of poverty, the Slavic training that we have, the gang workshops that we were able to attend. Really, these types of sessions that come from the collaborative members help us understand our community, or in the case of grant writing, help us get resources to support our various efforts. Besides these incredible beneficial impacts to the city, and particularly to the work we do in general services, I personally and professionally learned so much. Each collaborative meeting includes a spotlight on a member organization, so we learn about each other's work and how we can leverage and support the work that we all do. Every single meeting, I walk away learning something new about the incredible work being done by our nonprofits and the organizations that have staff out in the trenches, and I see people making connections with each other and that lifts and supports the efforts. I've been attending for over 20 years, and I still look forward to the collaborative every time it meets. I'm excited about the first virtual meeting, Nicole, in September. And as you can see, I'm an eternal fan, and with that, I will turn it back over to Nicole.
Great, thank you, Mary. Next, we'll hear from Sharon.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Sharon Nielsen with the Administrative Services Department. And I was assigned as the facilitator for the collaborative starting in 2010, and it was just an overwhelmingly positive experience. It's one that I see as a highlight of my career with Citrus Heights. All the nonprofit and educational partners that I met were just passionate in the goal of improving the quality of life for the citizens of the city. And it truly was just a humbling experience to see everyone working together for the common good. And during the early years, as Mary had mentioned, staff worked with members, and they developed and implemented programs that helped build community and relationships in our new city. And those early leaders and participants did some amazing hands-on work. During my tenure, the group began to transition so that the members took on more responsibility in determining their monthly meeting format, the content, they set annual goals, they determined which workshops to present for the year. There were some challenges because of the 2008-2009 recession and a point where many of the member agencies were having decreased staffing, but the majority of members hung in there, and they realized how essential it was during those times to network together and how essential their programs were to the quality of life for the citizens, and particularly those frequently classified as vulnerable populations. But there weren't maybe as many large hands-on projects during my years as facilitator, but members did initiate changes that have had great benefits for the city. One of the things that I would like to give an example, the group one year identified homelessness as one of three key issues that they wanted to work on, and Ken Bennett from Sacramento Self-Help Housing used that leverage to help get what was then just an idea, the Citrus Heights Heart Group, to become something more. Collaborative members such as Ken and Arti Ferris were instrumental in helping that group get off the ground. So, you can see that one of the benefits of the collaborative, along with the networking opportunities, is that ability to leverage what each of them have to offer in order to work towards a common goal. I can recall celebrating the 15-year anniversary of the collaborative during my tenure, and I truly hope that it continues to be a valuable resource for the city and within the city for many, many years to come. Turn it back to Nicole.
Great, thank you, Sharon. Next, we'll hear from Leslie.
Hi, everybody. My name is Leslie Adorno Day Chasing, and I work for SMUD. I work in a department called Residential Assistance Delivery, and so what I do is I'm in charge of all of our programs that are considered low-income and assistance, residential assistance programs. My job is to basically raise a w- of these programs out in the community. So, I have been on with SMUD since 2015, and since then, Citrus Heights has always been a monthly calendar. I've tried to make almost every single meeting. It's been a wonderful experience, although I think SMUD was actually involved since the very beginning. So, really happy for the last five years to have been part of the collaborative. Sharon and Nicole have done a wonderful job at, you know, running the meetings. I know Mary's been involved, too, so it's been a really great experience working with them. One of the things that has been really instrumental is that it's a way to, for all of us, social service networks to come together. One thing everybody just mentioned was basically we serve the under-deserved populations, hard-to-reach populations, vulnerable populations, homeless, and so it's been neat being able to leverage all of our programs and resources together. And the last, it's kind of like a breakfast where we all get together and brainstorm, what are the biggest needs for the new year, what other, what should be on the agenda, which, you know, is really, I think, sets the precedence of what really needs to be done for the year. It's not just who wants to present, we're trying to figure out what the greatest needs are, and then trying to figure out who would be the best to, you know, present these ideas, and it just all comes together. One of the things that I've been involved with in the collaborative is we have sponsored many events over the year, and so that's another hat that I wear. I do community engagement for sponsorships and events. Sunday Fun Day, Arti's going to speak, but Student Connect is, all of the students in San Juan are considered low-income, you know, just really being able to be a part of those events. We also have student internships at SMUD. We have the Shine Grant for nonprofit. Eper and Medrate are under the umbrella of the programs that I represent at SMUD, which are discount programs, weatherization, energy savings. So, we're able to get the word out, time of day, you know, through all of the events that we sponsor in the community. And we just really know what's going on. When we go to the meetings, we meet people there, and we know that they can count on less person, no matter what issues going on at SMUD, or even if it's in a different apartment. I'm their go-to person that they know that can get it to the right spot and get whatever that they need. And the same with all of our other, you know, representatives from other community organizations. We just, it really gives us relationship building, and these are important issues that are going on, so we can get, you know, basically connected, the people connected to the right resources. I wanted to share with you something really wonderful that came out of Citrus Heights Collaborative, other than the wonderful relationships and events we've been able to be a part of and just getting them about our utility assistance and right now COVID assistance. I met a young lady and her partner by the name of Elena. She is actually blind. Her partner is very little seeing, and they have a company called Equal Access. Even though they can barely see, her husband, you know, can barely see, and she's blind, they come to almost every meeting, you know, of Citrus Heights, and she always asks, why doesn't SMUD have a, you know, a braille, something in braille as far as, you know, the thermostat, the, you know, brochures to let the community know about. So, I invited her into SMUD, and we've been working with our HR department, and they are going to be, actually got put on hold because of COVID, but after COVID, we've been working on getting diversity training at SMUD through, about the blind community, you know, meeting, and how we can have better process and improvements. And that is a woman and her spouse that I met through the Citrus Heights Collaborative. So, anyway, it's just been a really positive, you know, experience for all of us, and I hope that it can continue. And really, Citrus Heights needs to be represented. We have about eight other collaboratives that I attend and help support in Sacramento, and Citrus Heights is, really needs to be on that. I'm glad that we have, you know, a forum that we can all help each other out, and it's just been a wonderful experience. So, thank you all for participating, and I hope to continue, and I'll be there on September 11th for the first virtual meeting.
Great, looking forward to it. Thank you, Leslie, and thanks for that story. That's really great to hear.
Thank you.
So, next, we'll hear from Arti.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Artith Ferris, and I am one of three McKinney-Vento liaisons in the San Juan Unified School District. McKinney-Vento is a federally funded program that's part of ESA. We serve students and families who have inadequate housing. This means that they might be doubled up or tripled up, they might be couch-surfing, maybe staying in motels or hotels, they may be staying in abandoned buildings, parks, cars, or other unsuitable places. Last year, in Citrus Heights, there were approximately 800 students who were in one of these categories. This year, with COVID, we kind of lost track of people in March. However, by phone calls and whatnot, we have in contact. Now that school has started, we're hoping that we can get back into formally identifying students. We're really concerned about what's going to happen, not only to our families and their rental situations or housing situations, but also the landlords possibly facing foreclosure and economic hardships as well. So, we're in uncharted waters right now. But our goals in general are to identify students that are in transition or homeless and make sure that they are immediately enrolled in school. They do not have to prove their address, the birth certificate, have their shots, anything. What we do is we enroll them, get them into the appropriate programs, and then work to backfill all those things in. One of the things that we do is to outreach to community partners to provide additional resources and to be able to refer our families to services. Services that we do provide through the district and our partners are school supplies, backpacks, transportation through the, well, now through the RT Smart Ride, food, clothing, different things like that. Want to say they've been going to school at a school for a long time and the family moves, schools have right to stay in that school and go to their school of origin. We also help the older kids with credit reductions if they've moved so much that graduating from high school is hopeless. And then we work with our own Citrus Heights Navigator, Tony, Yay Tony, for housing referrals and plans to help folks figure out a way to stable housing. So, this is where the Citrus Heights Collaborative ties in. Like Mary, I've had many hats, and like Mary, I was there at the beginning. San Juan District was very committed to the city of Citrus Heights, and the idea was on the table about resiliency and building assets, improving families and the community through strengths and through assets, not looking at what was wrong so much as what was right, and how could we build on that? And what could people bring to the table? So one day, we all got to learn about resiliency and whatnot, and came back. And Citrus Heights put that knowledge into writing the Healthy Cities Grant, along with different partners. And that was kind of the beginning of the collaborative as well, because everyone who had a part in that came together, and we were so excited. We had ideas and interchanged, all sorts of information. And many San Juan departments have benefited from participating in the collaborative. The kids with the youth summits and the youth activities were able to have youth voice to be part of their community, to connect with residents and with businesspeople. We've had a program where the kids came and watched city council meetings because they didn't even know what a city council did or was. We have had tutoring programs. There was a time when dropping off kids at school was a real mess. And so the city leaders got together with the school principals and figured out, along with the police department, better ways of dropping off kids, which that kind of collaboration continues to this day. And one of the things I really remember is Kathy Capriola, the original facilitator, during the meetings when people would make their presentations, would always say, "And what can the city do for you?" And that always caught people off guard, because, you know, they're going to present their program or ask for stuff, and Kathy turning that around really stirred up good conversations and opened the relationships wider so that we could really think what is possible. So out of those came some of the things that all the other folks have talked about already. And Sharon talked about Citrus Heights Heart, which I'm a board member of. One of the things that she also alluded to was the Student Connect. Last year, we brought over 450 homeless and low socioeconomic students together with 60-some providers for physicals, food, housing, all sorts of resources. So it was kind of like a one-stop shop for these families, and it was really well received. And unfortunately, because of COVID, it's on delay to where we can, you know, again, safely get 400 people in a building again someday. But, you know, that's huge. And not only that, Citrus Heights Heart provides shelter for about 12 weeks during the coldest part of winter for 20 chronically homeless folks who would otherwise be on the street. Because of not having Student Connect this year, we've thrown a lot of support to the Sayonara Center. We were really blessed with SMUD partnering us with funds to help us put some of this stuff on. So Heart was a really great outcome, but there hasn't been a meeting I went to, and I've been to most, where I didn't connect with somebody either in a personal or professional capacity and be blessed and connected, or be able to relay information that was helpful to help someone do better, be better, have a more positive outcome. So the collaborative is also a source of volunteers. It allows for exchange of services. It's a forum for distributing event information. I think it was already mentioned that it's an advisory committee for the tobacco programs, for the tobacco prevention use programs for the school district.
We might have lost Arti.
I think we lost connection.
Yep.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, a big thank you to Mary and Sharon and Leslie and Arti for your involvement in the collaborative. And I look forward to our next virtual Zoom meeting. So with that, that ends our presentation. Are there any questions for us?
Nicole, first of all, thanks for making the presentation, you know, covering off what it does, what it gives back. You know, it's been out there for quite a while, and it looks like the connections that people are making are paying huge dividends. So, you know, again, thanks for bringing it forward to not only remind the council what it does, but to give the members of the public watching exactly what the collaborative does. And like you said, you know, thanks to Mary, Sharon, Leslie, and Arti for telling their stories and on a personal level what they get out of it. So any other comments or questions from council?
I would just like to apologize real quickly for getting cut off. I just wanted to say we're stronger together, and thank you for your time. I hope I don't get cut off again.
Not a problem, Arti. We're only as good as our technology. Vice Mayor Miller?
I did have a couple of questions. Yes, thanks, Jeff. Nicole, what are the membership requirements? I noticed, I think I mentioned, community groups or service clubs. Do we, are service clubs involved, like Rotary Lions, Kiwanis? I'm gonna leave somebody else for Optimist Women's Club. Are they, do they participate?
They do participate. They are part of the collaborative. They do attend our meetings. They have given presentations to the collaborative as well, what their service club does and what they offer to the community.
What about, oh, I'm thinking of youth groups like Little League or, oh, shoot, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Are they, are they involved, or do we actively seek them out to get them involved?
I haven't seen their involvement, but that's something that we definitely can look into, invite them to the collaborative.
That'd be cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Any additional questions or comments for Nicole? All right, again, thanks, Nicole. Very informative and in-depth presentation, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next item. Amy?
Next item is city manager items.
I have none, thank you.
Next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
I'd just like to restate that I would like to request that we formulate a letter to our legislators, particularly those who represent us, but to the legislature as a whole, about how, about the comments that we made tonight regarding this new directive that we have on recycling.
Second that.
Third.
Fourth.
Okay, so it sounds like that will be moved forward. And I don't, I don't think it necessarily has to be an agendized item. City Manager Boyd, if we give you that direction, can you look with your staff to put together a letter to our legislatures?
Yes, Mayor. I heard plenty tonight to already move that forward, take care of that. We'll collaborate with you once that's drafted.
Thank you. Any other items by council members?
Just one real quick, Mayor. I would ask that we close tonight's meeting, not with a moment of silence, but in honor of Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff Eric Schmidt, who was critically wounded during a gun battle this last Saturday with a suspect, but is now home on a long road of recovery. And just that we end our meeting hopefully in honor of him and his bravery and actions.
Okay. So done. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Thank you all.